Proposals for developments coming before you. And they're going to cite things like, hey, there's a huge demand in the state of Florida for housing. Well, we're actually seeing those numbers starting to decline. And I think that if you look at Lennar Holmes and D.R. Horton, they've actually spun off their land-holding arms, right, to different stock issues. So what they've done is they've divested themselves of the land in order to put themselves in a better cash position. They did the exact same thing right around 2007, 2008, before the crash. So something to be aware of. The graph on the last page shows that the areas in red, which is primarily suburban-type development, require some sort of subsidy in order to support the infrastructure. More rural, you end up with a surplus, or super-high density, like high-rise, you know, compact, then you actually have a surplus there, too. But if we continue developing High Springs in kind of this suburban environment, it's just going to cost us a ton of money. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Going once, going twice. So, moving on to new business. We're going to discuss, consider, and act on combined operational assistance and voluntary cooperation mutual aid agreement for the High Springs Police Department and the Alachua County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Mayor, this is approved as to legality and form. It's a standard agreement. Basically, if we call in help, we have some major catastrophe, then they are under our supervisor. If they call us for help, then we're under their supervisor. They're still under the same rules and regulations of the High Springs Police Department if it's one of our guys. If it's one of their individuals, Alachua County Sheriff's Deputy, they're under their rules and regulations. The indemnification clause is there. Sovereign immunity provisions are there. It's a standard agreement and helps our Chief of Police, and hopefully helps the county, Chad Scott, as well. Sheriff Scott. Appropriate motion would be to approve Alachua County Sheriff and City of High Springs combined operational assistance and voluntary cooperation mutual aid agreement.
Anything from the Commissioners? Anything from the Otters?
I think two-fifths of the Commissioners understand this very personally, don't you?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve Resolution 2025-A.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I referenced the wrong thing. I'm so sorry. I was on the wrong one. Sorry, I want to make sure I'm referencing the right one.
Scratch that.
I was already with Ms. Tammy. Sorry.
That might be the easiest one on the agenda next, and this one's easy.
That we approve the voluntary cooperation mutual aid agreement for the High Springs Police Department and Alachua County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is Resolution 25-2025-A, a resolution the City of High Springs dedicating and naming the Pop-Up Shade Park, which is located at Catherine Taylor Park, as Ms. Tammy's Shade Park, providing effective date. Appropriate motion will be to pass Resolution 2025-A upon its reading by title only.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Appleby, High Springs Parks and Rec Director. It is my great honor to have this resolution in front of you. When I first started, we opened up the Douglas Community Center, and it had weighed on me, how can we honor Ms. Tammy's legacy for being a vital part of keeping that property, the historic significance of that property? So if I may, I'd like to have Ms. Cassandra Davis come up here for just a moment and give you guys an idea of what Ms. Tammy's legacy is to this community.
Absolutely.
Good evening. Mayor Grunder and Commissioners. I am Cassandra G. Davis, Vice President, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, former Chairperson of the High Springs Child Care Center Board of Directors. I would like to call this a Black History Moment in the City of High Springs. Thank you for allowing me to share a few comments about a young lady who worked forty-two years at the former High Springs Child Care Center, teaching and nurturing children, two to twelve years of age, Mrs. Tammy Webster Fleming, affectionately known as Ms. Tammy. She believed children are our future, teach them well, and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside, give them a sense of pride. She always did that. Ms. Tammy's son attended High Springs Child Care Center, and one day she told the staff she could no longer afford to send him to the daycare center. So they offered her a position with four hours a day. Then it turned into a full-time employment. She went on to receive her National Child Development Credentials, known as CDA, to enhance her ability to teach preschool children. Ms. Tammy reluctantly became the director in 1986 of the High Springs Child Care Center, served in that capacity until June 30th, 2020, when the center sadly closed. She gave her children all the skills they needed to prepare them for kindergarten. Ms. Tammy was an old-school teacher. No technology, just plain old rote learning. And you learn to say, "Good morning," "Yes, ma'am," "No, ma'am," and most of all, "Thank you." The teachers at High Spring Community School could always tell the children who attended Ms. Tammy's High Springs Child Care Center when they entered kindergarten. The children ate well, too, home-cooked breakfast and lunch, and every day, and included a snack. She's always excited to say, "I had him or her at the daycare center, and now he is well-established in their career." What a proud moment for her and the student. She openly worked with volunteers from the community, to name a few, the City of High Springs, and thank you, High Springs Library, High Springs Women's Club, Mount Carmel United Methodist Church, Kiwanis Club of Santa Fe, and the list continues. Thank you all for your many years of support. It truly made a difference in the lives of our children. Now Ms. Tammy can sit on the grounds where she worked for so many years and reminisce at her name Shade Park. Ladies and gentlemen, join us in congratulating Ms. Tammy for her years of dedicated service to our children with the naming of the Ms. Tammy Pop-Up Shade Park at Catherine Taylor Park. Congratulations, Ms. Tammy.
On January 20th, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Day, we planted three trees. Ms. Tammy helped us plant those. And I think this being significant Black History Month, her legacy is something I don't think anybody can reach to. So Ms. Tammy Fleming, y'all, let's give her another round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is definitely a surprise in so many ways. I done my job that I was asked to do, but the pleasure came when I saw the little faces change. So the little faces changed from, "Oh, is that how you make an A?" So I can write my name now. You know, it would just open my heart to a learning door. And as they walked in, I waved goodbye because they were going on to kindergarten. I wanted to cry. They was like, you know, "We got to leave you." I said, "But I'm going to be checking on you at their schoolhouse, okay?" "Okay, Ms. Tammy." But that was my love, and for forty-two years, I did it, and I have no regrets at all. I learned the parents, some of the parents, I had them when they were babies, and then they sent me their kid. So I felt like Grandma Tammy at the daycare sometime. And I'll tell a parent, "Now, you know this baby needs shots. Go take him to get a shot." "Oh, Ms. Tammy, I got to work." I said, "Take off early. Go buy and get the baby shot." Simple and stuff like that was always a must for me to let them know that the important things come first, and their children are definitely important in my eyes. And thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That's one of my babies. I have to have two officers, Alan, Adam Joy, and Officer Hampton. There was also much to it. The door is open.
That is fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Tammy. You are exactly what makes up High Springs. That's what makes this place amazing. We should have started with that.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, this was definitely something I was excited about because before you came, Jennifer, I asked about a plaque. Now she got a whole park. So I want to approve Resolution 2025-A.
Second.
I think this one's important enough. I would like it to be a roll call.
Absolutely. Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Mayor Grunder.
Absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
We should have more of those.
All right, we're going to discuss, consider, and act on Ordinance 2025-02.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City of High Springs, Florida, calling for a referendum question to be placed before the qualified electors of the City of High Springs at the next general election, which is scheduled for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, providing charter referendum questions determining whether to adopt the proposed amendments to the charter for the City of High Springs and providing for the full text of the proposed amended charter for the City of High Springs, providing for the requisite ballot language, providing for repeal of all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and repealing or providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass Ordinance Number 2025-02 upon its reading by title only.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Walker, I appreciate the language here. It's all very clear. I think it's going to be easy to understand for people when it's on the ballot. I don't think we're going to be getting as many questions, so... I like the language. So long as it's legal, that's great, so...
It meets our approval, but thank you for the compliment.
It reads nicely. It's going to be obvious what people are voting on, and I think that's really helpful. The only comment I have is on item number three, in terms of limiting the mayor. Shall the city's charter be updated to limit the mayor's term to one year or until such time that the successor is elected? I don't have any problem with that. I'm not sure why we have the verbiage that no Commissioners shall hold the position of mayor for consecutive terms unless by a supermajority vote of then-sitting commission. The mayor position has rotated routinely since the 1970s. There was a term, a period of time, where it was always the same person. I look back. And I think we do a pretty good job in terms of following the order of operations. I'm not sure that's really necessary in there. Is there anything else, Mr. Walker, that requires a supermajority vote by the commission to pass? I know that's kind of a loaded question.
I don't think there is anything in the charter that requires a supermajority. I don't believe so. I'm kind of harkening back to the... And Sue's here, so she could talk or speak to it as well. I participated in probably the majority of the revision committee meetings on the charter. I think what the intent was at that time was if there was something that was controversial going on, and we wanted the existing mayor to hold over to the next term and not rotate it, and it would provide additional stability because of that controversy, that it would give you the ability to say, "Wait a minute, this mayor should stay on because we've just got a hot-button item that's going on." But it should be a supermajority of the commission that does that. So it's yours' preference on what you want to do with this. But I think that was the rationale and the background for it.
I mean, like I said, I think we do a pretty decent job of rotating through. And I think that that decision can be made up by the commission at large. And, you know, the intent is that the mayor serves one term until, you know, it turns over. So I think we've done a pretty good job of honoring that. And, you know, requiring a supermajority. I don't know, I just don't see a position in where it would be appropriate or required that a mayor serve a second consecutive year anyway. You know, especially in, like, say, for the last two years. Mayor Grunder was right there as Vice Mayor. He was well-versed. So I'm not sure that, you know, he hit the ground running right away. If we had hot-button items, he was certainly aware of them. And you're certainly aware of them now, so... You know, I mean, I think it's certainly acceptable to limit it to one term until such a time that a successor is elected.
I kind of like it, because you might just have a commission that just say, "I don't want to be mayor at all."
Because it's an option.
But it's so much fun. Everybody's always nice to you.
It's like the same thing with CRA, you know? A lot of people don't want to be there, but...
Yeah.
And then I was able to have two terms. So like, if we had all sitting up here, and Tricia says, "Well, I really think I can get another year in," and everybody says, "Hey, go for it, man." We don't want to...
You're next.
Well, then, could we modify the verbiage to reflect your perspective there, Mr. Walker? Could we add something in, in such a case where, you know, the mayor expressly preferred, and he or she had the support of the commission, that it wouldn't have to be limited to a one-year term, or...
I think certainly you could delete the provision altogether. If you want it to not be something that rotates on a year-to-year basis, for whatever reason. There's, to your point, I think in that instance, I'd just remove the language altogether.
I think it gives it a nice flavor. You know, we have some... It changes up every year, and I don't have a problem with that, but...
I like the change.
Yeah.
I like it rotating.
But Vice Mayor...
I mean, there has been a time where it really didn't rotate. It kind of bounced.
Much, just back and forth. That's true. But that still was compliant with these terms.
It was compliant with that, but...
It just went back and forth between two people, yeah. But this one wouldn't prevent that from happening again if it did, so...
I don't mind it being an option. I like the fact that we rotate every year, and that we can maintain the status quo. A supermajority, I mean, that means whoever's mayor, everybody likes it, and they want to stick to it. The option, to me, is okay, but I do like the status quo of, you know, like you said. The option's there, we need it, then we got it.
And why does it need to be a supermajority? Why can't it just be plain and simple, majority rule? I'm okay to both of them. I just don't see where it needs to be a supermajority. I'm with Commissioner Howell. I'm with also Commissioner Miller. I don't like the word "supermajority." Straight across majority vote.
Would that be okay with you?
Yeah, I'm fine with whatever. I just think that the option should be there because I feel like with how our commission is read now, it could be a possibility that could happen because we get along pretty good.
That's true, that's true. So would it be acceptable to just change "supermajority" to "majority"? Would that...
All it takes is a motion and a sec.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, or do we need...
Oh, yes.
Probably comment.
Open for citizen comment, please. I got ahead of myself.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 2025-02, accepting that in Charter Amendment Number Three, we remove the term "supermajority" and replace it with "majority."
I'll second.
Been moving and seconding it's an ordinance. We'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Item four, discuss, consider, and act on the city facility rental rates, parks, and recreation rates, and leased buildings.
Mr. Mayor, before Ashley gets up here while she's getting ready, Ashley, as everybody knows, is an all-star employee. And we look for ways to grow people, to grow their skills. And I gave Ashley this project, let her form her own committee. She held her own committee. She got hold of other municipalities. She did a phenomenal job, and she's worked on this for months. And really want to thank her for her good work. And either which way it goes, we're happy with whatever, but we just want to give you the best information, and Ashley and her crew has done that.
Mayor Grunder, Commission. So first, I just wanted to actually say thank you to the City Manager, Mr. Marshall, the Finance Director, Diane Wilson, the Building Manager, April Roberts, and also the Parks and Rec Director, Jennifer Appleby, for also helping me get this together. So today, we're here to talk about the city rental facility rates, the parks and recreation rates, and the city leased buildings. So I've got some pictures for you in case nobody knows what they look like, where they are. So our second slide, excuse me, we're going to go ahead and go with current and proposed rates. So for the columns, we have the location, capacity, deposit, half-day price, full-day price, and the size of the facilities. So for the Civic Center, you can see we've got the capacity at 150. I did kind of a comparison with another municipality for Newberry Freddie Warmack Building. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but they also have a capacity of around 120. So I did kind of a comparison with Newberry and Alachua to try to keep our rates, you know, so we're not overdoing it because we haven't updated our rates since 2018. So I'm not sure if anybody was aware of that. So the Douglas Community Center is pretty much the only one that we just recently, we did, we just recently up those. But we also wanted to up them again. So right now, staff is proposing a $10 to $100 increase in all facility rentals. If you have any questions about what you're looking at right now, I'll be happy to answer them right now, just for the rates, because I have a few more things to talk about on this.
Okay, so I hate to be the bad guy here. But, okay, Douglas Community Center, let's talk about that one first. It ain't even been a year, and we already going up on the price. I think that is a little bit outrageous. And then I was trying to figure out who came up with this number on the next page of the annual expense revenues.
So I got with Diane on those.
Because I feel like Diane just pulled this out of the sky because it hasn't been a year for her to even know any of these numbers. So I feel like all of these numbers on Douglas Community Center is inaccurate.
So what we did with that, because that's on the next slide, you'll see where it says "estimated" under the number. So what we did was we took the two months that the building has been open, and we just kind of did like an estimation on it for annual revenue and expenses.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, like, we haven't... You know, it's just like the AI when she says, "Oh, we don't have enough data for this. We don't have enough data for the Douglas Community Center" to even say that it's going to lose revenue, it's going to gain. So like, that one should be off the board. She doesn't have any data to prove any of these numbers she's put. We had an MLK event, so that took away a weekend. We had a grand opening that took away a weekend. So like, these numbers, they were out of the sky for... So I'm not, me personally, I'm not entertaining the Douglas Community Center. The Santa Fe Room and Post Springs Room, I'm okay with them going up, but the problem is the condition that they're in. If you're going to go up on somebody's... Nobody's going to spend $100 on, $150 on the Santa Fe Room, and it has painted chairs, painted tables, painted walls, painted carpet. Nobody's doing that. And like I said, this has nothing to do with you.
No, you're fine. I have points to all those things. So this is kind of like a future. Some of them could be futures. Some of them, we kind of need, like, sooner rather than later. So like with the Santa Fe Room, right now, Appleby is working on getting some quotes to fix the carpet, paint the room. With the chairs and the tables, I'm not really sure what the plan is for that.
Yeah, because even with... So even the numbers with that, these numbers are inaccurate again because they don't speak to the fact that all the summer, the Santa Fe Room is not used because of the art camp. So these numbers are not accurate.
I could, I was going to say, I can provide...
They're accurate, so what you're seeing...
But I'm saying it's not accurate to what it would have actually been if we were not having somebody in there. It's not accurate.
It is accurate. So we factored that lost revenue. We're going to lose that revenue anyways because we, as a city, gave the kids summer use of the room. When you do that, that no longer allows you to rent that room. So these are the numbers...
I'm talking about now, so for the next year, that's not on there because we're not doing the summer camp again. Are we doing it again?
That's up to you. That's the commission.
She, I think she actually...
She said she's not doing it.
That's what I was told, but I haven't heard from her.
Well, she said, last time she said she's not doing it. So it should have been estimated on here.
I think she retired, or she's doing something else.
Okay. So what you're looking at is the actual numbers, except for the Douglas Community Center. This is the numbers that we have, the annual expenses and the revenues, the way it's been set. No, nobody rents the Santa Fe Room because you're right, it's trash. How are we going to afford to remodel a Santa Fe Room when we do it for $40 a half-day? Nobody's going to rent it, but it's $40. When you look at some of these leases and some of these things, these buildings are deteriorating. And you're going to see in later slides, more of these buildings are deteriorating. And this is a bad example, but some of them have $10 leases, and we just put a $15,000 AC unit in one. It would take 150,000 years to pay off that AC at the rate of $10 a year.
Right, what'd I get there?
So what goes into the Santa Fe Room is where we've allowed that room to go into neglect. It is garbage room. I wouldn't rent that for $10. I wouldn't. But how are we going to get the money to remodel it? There has to be a system where the rate is going to fund the new tables, the new chairs, the paint. That's how we get the money to remodel.
So you're thinking, going up on the price, somebody's going to rent it for the up price with that condition?
No, we're going to fix it first, but we got, how are we going to recoup that money?
So Santa Fe Room and Post Springs Room, when Damon was here, he said those were the lowest amount of rentals that... Those rooms didn't get rented like that when he was here. So is that going to change when you raise the price?
With a better room? That's our anticipation. When we put new flooring...
The room was perfect before.
It has deteriorated a lot since Damon's been here.
So what I'm saying is, when the room was fine, nobody was renting it then.
Then we don't have to invest in it, and we just won't run it.
I can give a little more history on that. We did used to not rent out those rooms very often because we used to have, the college would come and give some, like, cooking classes or history classes. And we had blocked those off at that time during the weeks when they would reserve it. So we weren't renting them out as often during that period of time.
That was like pre-me, but I'm talking about post-me, when y'all got me here. Here, those rooms were not still getting rented out because I think I was the only person renting it on a weekly basis. I don't think nobody else was renting it. Everybody else was, robotics was in there, they weren't renting. The summer camp was in there, they weren't renting. Everybody else was just in there.
So what you're going to see is we're trying to put a stop to these...
But I'm saying, nobody wanted it either. So I'm saying, if you go up on the price and it was perfect then, it's not going to help you in there. It's just going to mess up the revenue, and then...
Okay, so you're saying nobody would rent it because the carpet and the paint and everything is all over everything, so nobody's going to rent it regardless. So if we invest the money and fix it up, it would be a nicer room, and people would be more inclined to rent it. Also, there's... We can't... So as you're going to see, Ashley's done a great job painting how much money being in the real estate business is costing the city. And you're going to see a good picture, if you allow her to go on other slides, that this is not sustainable.
I get that, but I'm focusing on this. You're talking about the next slide.
Well, you haven't ever got to the next slide. She has...
We don't need to get to the next slide because I'm talking about this. We don't need to get to the next slide, because I'm talking about this.
But you, we're not even on the slide you were just talking about. You're talking about this one, the FY24 annual expenses and revenue.
This is the same, this is the same thing.
But they're not on that slide.
Go ahead to the next one, because, but it's talking about the same thing.
Same basic information.
Go ahead.
But it's a-
It's not different, because it's, it's talking about-
Andrew, it is different, this is a different slide than the one we just looked at.
But it's talking about the same thing that we're talking about right now, it's not different, so go ahead, because, and I'll hush, but we're gonna talk about the same thing. Civic Center, Douglas Center, Santa Fe Room, Post Springs Room, is that not what we're talking about right now?
Why, why are you so angry right now?
Because, I'm trying to tell you we're talking about the same thing, and you're telling me we're not. Yes, we are.
We're talking about the slides, that's what we were just saying, is the slides are not the same, the, what the-
You got a slide in front of you.
All right, you can interrupt me, but the situation, and the thing we're talking about, is that we're talking for an audience here who does not see that. So that is the difference.
Well, you could just move the slide.
You said not to, because you wanted to talk about the, oh, okay, all right, Ashley, please go ahead.
Okay, so, the fiscal year 24 annual expenses and revenues, you have your location, annual expenses and annual revenues, we're gonna not look at the blue part yet. So, right now, for the expenses for the Civic Center, you can see they are pretty high, and that's not including when we had to repair the AC, we had to replace it, excuse me, and paint the building, and that cost us about $16,000. So, um, you can tell that it, it's expensive, it's upkeep, repairing, everything is, is expensive. And, right now, unfortunately, because of the prices that we charge, you can see that our annual revenues aren't cutting what our expenses are. So, we just kind of did, this is all estimations. Um, I have a breakdown, also, if you'd like to look at it, what Diane gave me, like an Excel spreadsheet with different, you know, prices and what the charges are. So, basically, what we're looking at is expenses including utilities, maintenance, insurance, staff time, and supplies. And then basically, only revenue we have are the rentals of the facility, so when somebody comes in and wants to rent the, the building, the room, whatever the case may be. So we don't have any other revenues coming in besides that. So, with the Douglas Community Center, like I said with the last slide, it's an estimate, because they were only open for two months when we have fiscal year 24 came about. The Santa Fe Room, like I said, has been, um, not used hardly at all, because it, the Good News Arts was in there, um, and then we didn't want to rent it out because of the condition of the building. So, like I said, Appleby is currently looking at different quotes, trying to find carpet, whatever we can do to make the building look better, to make the room look better. And as for the Post Springs Room, that's robotics, robotics is in there, um, we can't rent that room out, they did make it look nice, they painted it, I mean, the carpet still needs to be replaced, but, um, we don't obviously make revenue off of that, because they are using it, and we don't charge them anything. So, the potential annual revenue with new rates, the blue, thought you see over there, so, that's basically with the rates that we are proposing. So, again, an estimate, just because if you don't want to do the price that we're proposing, or if, say, maybe we don't get that many rentals in fiscal year 25, it's gonna fluctuate. So, that's what you see in the blue columns, is the potential annual revenue. So, moving on to parks and recreation rates. So currently, what we have in advertised is what's in the gray, the very top, so, sports complex, one softball field, sports complex, both fields. So what me and Ms. Appleby did was, we got together, broke down what's out at the sports complex, you've got Field 1, Field 2, you've got all these fields, so, we wanted to charge per field, and if people wanted to combine the fields, we wanted to do it that way too. So, as of right now, you know, with the conditions of the fields, we're, she's trying to get them up to, you know, up to date, get them going, and, um, hopefully, maybe in the future, have tournaments, some other way of making revenue. So this is just kind of like, you know, uh, an update to what we currently have. For the Memorial Park, same thing, we just wanted to break it down, you've got a few fields out there, we can do the entire complex if they want to do a tournament, somebody wants to use the whole entire field for a huge birthday party, whatever. So, um, we also added some additional fees, um, that's also for like future tournaments, things like that, so we can have those charges if we need them. So now we have city leased buildings. So with this, you can see that, um, we have multiple locations, we have, um, a few occupants, and our annual fee that we charge for these locations is $10 a year. So we just basically want to have discussions with y'all to see what direction you want us to go in, when it comes to these leases. We have some leases that are out of date right now, we need to renew them, update them, and we just want a direction to see if we want to continue on with the $10 leases, um, or what exactly y'all wanted to do. So, basically, right now, we want to, um, look for direction on the rates, so we can bring back a resolution, and, um, just kind of get direction on the updates for the Parks and Rec, and then updates for the city leased buildings.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, you did a great job, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm not really so plugged into the Parks and Rec side of it, but in terms of the room rental side, this is simply an unsustainable business model. We're losing our ears on this, we cannot continue to lose money on these facilities. My understanding, when, when the arts program came before the commission for the first time, it was their responsibility to clean it up, it was their responsibility to replace the tables and the chairs, it was their responsibility to get the paint taken care of on the carpets. How, how is it that that did not happen? Do we know?
We do, so I did a walkthrough before Good News Arts set up, and I took, um, walked through, I don't remember the lady's name, and we walked through, and the carpets were bad to begin with, um, stains everywhere and whatnot. Did the kids make it worse? Yes, they did, but it was so horrible to begin with that I couldn't charge Good News Art for a carpet replace that was garbage to begin with, and that's why we're talking about replacing the carpet now. It wasn't just the kids, it's been years and years and years of wear on that carpet. And, um, when I went there, the chairs and whatnot, they had paint on them already-
Well, because they had been there two years prior to your seeing it.
The carpet got bad the first year they were in there.
Right, right, and, and my understanding was, I didn't see anything, I tried in earnest to find them a more suitable location, but they were not gonna have it. Um, so, my understanding was that they were going to repair and replace the things that were damaged.
That was what we were told.
So, do we have a contract? Do we have an agreement that stated that, or were we just told that?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Um, so, uh, they're funded by the Alachua Children's Trust, um, and that doesn't cover, um, repairs like that. However, there was an agreement with Jessica Kalatas, uh, who was, uh, Good News Arts, um, that she was to replace, I believe it was three tables, four tables, um, and, um, we've been unsuccessful in our communication with her to get that check to us. But, uh, eight-foot tables are about $100 apiece, so we're only looking at $400, which is great, that's four tables that we'll have that'll be cleaned, that we don't have now. Um, but, uh, her funding would not, uh, I'm surprised that she's able, most likely, the, the money that she's getting for the tables that we're supposed to get, um, is probably from her registration fees, um, because, uh, the grants that she received to run the program wouldn't allow for that kind of a repair. Um, I don't know what the carpet looked like two years, three years prior to her doing it, but, um, um, it's, yeah, both rooms are, are significant in that, um, even the room at the very far end, which I believe they call the Blue Springs Room, there's a large stain on that carpet as well, so-
How, how-
I have no idea, I don't know, but there is, um, and, and not, not from Byron at all, who knows when it got there. It, it might be from the roof, so, um, that building, um, definitely needs, you know, a lot of investment. Um, my understanding too is that grants that were received to restore the part of the building that we are using, it's meant for youth activities, culture, and education. So I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe perhaps we table that portion of the rental while we work to fix that up, to make it presentable for renting, use it for what it was meant to be for, education, culture activities, youth activities, those kind of things. Um, but the rates on the other ones, I really want y'all to consider, especially the Civic Center, um, we are well below, um, other people in our area, and it is hard to, you know, plum, that's an old building too, so, um, you know, consider raising those rates so we can at least break even.
Ashley, can you go back two slides? Commissioner, one more. Keep going. I, okay, the blue, one's the blue. So if you look, to your point, this is not, this is exactly what it says, it's not sustainable, take the blue out, take a look at your expenses on every one, I get Douglas Centers an estimate, and we had to come up with some data, but everything else is true data, and we, our expenses outpace our revenues. So, we are going, um, down.
We got $782 last year for a Santa Fe Room?
If that's what it says.
I'm just asking, was that last year?
Yeah. So if you look with the new proposed rates, we're not making money, we're closing the gap.
Still losing money.
Um, we are, I get it.
And we're actually not gonna get the one there, because, aren't you putting the priest chairs inside the Santa Fe Rooms?
Santa Fe Rooms.
So you're not gonna get to a thousand each?
I'm so sorry, I have to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
We have cleared out two rooms in the unused portion of the old school, so that we can keep the Santa Fe Room open, so, that's not correct, we're not-
Yeah, I'm just asking, because I know when we were in the priest meeting-
We were, but we made arrangements so that we didn't have to do that, so we have two large rooms, even bigger than the Santa Fe Room, that aren't, uh, suitable for the public, uh, it's not hooked up to, um, sprinklers, so, we have made other arrangements for that, so that room won't go offline, sorry.
So, what Ashley has displayed here, again, take the blue column out, you can, however you want to do the numbers, we'll say this is ab, we'll say this isn't even real data, let's not argue that. $25,000 in expenses and $14,000 in revenue, just in these four rooms, we're losing $10, $10,000 a year. These raises are needed to close the gap, we are still not there, but, we, you, as a commission, this is before you, Commissioner Howell, is you guys told me to find ways to close up these gaps and find ways to increase revenues, and this is what Ashley had, and her team have recommended, this isn't raising, this isn't making us money, this is slowing the rent.
Yeah.
We gotta stop the bleeding somewhere.
Oh, did I understand, listen to, to Jennifer, that building can only be used for youth activities over at the old school?
Not only, but that was the, the spirit of the grant, I believe it was back in 1996, I'm not sure how far that back that went, but, the restoration of that building was to be used for youth and culture activities, but that doesn't mean that's the only thing that can happen.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, with these rooms being destroyed and not taken care of, and before you got here, and as well as some of us, and misleading information that was fed some other commissioners, the place ain't been took care of at all. If that's the case, and the tradition of how people are gonna treat our facilities, can we turn them into city offices?
We could, and, I've talked-
Not that building.
Yeah, well, so we're outgrowing, as, as, for example, tonight, for Bridlewood, Bridlewood's gonna come up, and what's that gonna do with the population? We are, as you saw tonight, every seat was full, with the population we have, and we are eventually going to outgrow this commission chamber. Also, you, I'll say it, I don't care, we need to hire a planner, that needs to be the next hire position that we create, so, eventually, we're gonna have to have a planning department, and there's other departments, as we grow, in City Hall, we're outgrowing City Hall. So we are gonna have to look for solutions for office spaces, so, one of the ideas, and it's not the greatest, is we dump the money into the Santa Fe Room, renovate that really nice, and turn that into a nice commission chambers with a lot more seating capacity for you, that's just one example, so we could do that, we could turn it into city offices. Jennifer Appleby was over there, but she was in a closet, she was basically in a janitor's closet, and that, that's not good for, good look for our Parks and Rec. We could do, it would take a space study, but we could do a space study, and have them determine how much space each employee, each department needs, and come up with a plan, and we could remodel the old school into office space, to answer your question, we could, and it's not a horrible idea, I'm just, we're just trying for now, until we get to that point.
Are we gonna have to repay that grant? Because I think that's the question.
I don't know.
We'd have to repay that grant.
We'll have to pull it, because I think it had a, so many years on it.
That could be the case.
Yeah.
I think we pull it, and I think there was so many years on it, and, to what you were saying, we do have a facility study, already, we did it, a couple of years ago.
So what is our potential of people calling, wanting spaces to rent for meetings, and, say, wedding receptions, or whatever kind of reception for those rooms, because, as manager said, I wouldn't pay to rent those rooms if that, that trashed?
We find, we find people that are looking for that kind of rent usually go to either the Douglas Center or the, um, Civic Center. They don't use the Pope, but if we renovated it, then it could, it would be an option, but it's not an op, I, I wouldn't, nevermind, I'm not gonna say that, but, no.
I get what you're going, but, we're running out of space for the city. So why not utilize that building for city offices?
That's an option.
And departments.
That's an option.
Uh, we gotta break even at least on these places. I mean, sensible, there's no way if I own that building, I'm gonna lose money on that building, that just ain't, I, I don't see it.
So about, Ashley, go about four slides forward. This is bad, actually, go back one, go back to that one real quick, one more, so, so let's take the blue column out. If you look at it, we're losing $10,000 on these four rooms. That's bad, but go about four slides forward.
Oh, this one?
No, keep going, this one. This is where your problem is. This is your problem. We have seven businesses that we maintain, or seven buildings that we maintain, and we make $10 a month.
A year.
A year, I'm sorry, $10 a year. This is what's draining us.
Well, I can tell you right now, that Boy Scouts up there, the city didn't build that building, it was given to the city from the Rotary Club, we have never asked the city a dime, anything that's been put in that building. We wired that facility, we did everything, we put our own air conditioner in there, we put our own floor in there, we put our own paint on the walls, own gutter on the building all the way from the Boy Scouts to the Garden Club. I agree with you, $10, but the city ain't put a dime in that building since I have been involved in Boy Scouts.
So me and Ashley walked to some of these buildings, and let's, I don't want to pick on anybody, but let's use St. Madeline Community Outreach, have you been to that building?
Yes, sir.
The roof-
Yes, sir.
Needs to be completely replaced.
No different than what ours is right now.
The skirting has to be done, the walls inside all need, it's a ton of money, we make $10. So how, so, we have this organization that's renting a building from us, and, we're paying, getting ready to pay to bring that building up to, where it's, it's deteriorating, and we don't have the money to do it, because we're making $10 a year. So, how do we fix this? And that's what we need guidance from, is, one, I don't think we should be in the real estate business, being landlords is not a city function, it's not.
That's a problem.
Well, it's, I, I get it, it's not feasible, understand that whatsoever, and it's not fair to other citizens that don't use any of them facilities, their tax dollars are being just thrown out there on the street.
Completely agree.
I see the same way with our Boy Scout building, look, it's trashed right now, the tree destroyed it, if the insurance don't, don't pay for it, we're meeting at my house and other people's homes right now.
So the Boy Scouts is an anomaly in this, because, you're right, the Boy Scouts have never asked for a penny, at least not while I've been here. However, we had to, we were getting ready to put a new roof on your building, and I was right, looking for funding for that, that was gonna be $30,000, that would have been 30 thou, if that tree didn't fall on it, I was gonna have to spend, we- That would have been thirty thou, if that tree didn't fall on it, I was gonna have to spend, we, we're gonna have to spend twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to tear out those structure beams and put a new roof on there. So now, I was never as happy as I've been in High Springs until the morning after that hurricane, I saw a tree fall through that building. I don't, insurance gonna put a new roof on that, we don't have to.
That's honesty right there.
That's honest.
Well, I've been in the attic, I know what shape it's in, I've crawled through there.
So let's go back to what you were saying is, no, the Boy Scouts have never asked us for that, I concede that. But, you need money put into that building if that tree didn't fall through.
Oh, there's no doubt about it.
How long would it take for the city, so the taxpayers, we're getting ready to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a roof that generates twenty dollars a year between two organizations?
Oh, I understand, you, you don't have to tell me, I, I'll just say, hey, we'll pull out. Because we can't afford it, there's no way we can generate enough money to cover that cost. I'm gonna be honest with you, there's no way. Do I expect the citizens to pay for it, really? I, I can't sit here and say yes, because that would be wrong.
Yeah, that's, and we need to get out of the real estate.
And if there's any facility there that's gotta have a roof, say an air conditioner, it's not fair to the citizens to pay for all that money and then we get no return on that building, I'm sorry.
We're required under the leases, when we update these leases, that anything over five hundred dollars falls on the city. Unless we go into triple N leases and that's gonna, that's gonna cripple all these organizations because a fifteen thousand dollar air conditioner goes out, or, well, let me say, we'll say a five thousand dollar air conditioner goes out at Saint Madeline. Saint Madeline ain't got five thousand dollars to put an air conditioner in. Who's gonna do it, the taxpayers. This, we gotta get, this is not sustainable.
So we got three problems we need to tackle, do we wanna tackle them one at a time?
We don't have to tackle them tonight, this is just for discussion, right, Ashley, we don't need to act on this tonight.
I have a question about the parks too. The Santa Fe Babe Ruth, when they use our facilities for their regular ball season and all that, do they pay for our fields or we just supply that? How does that work?
So, we're under contract with Santa Fe Babe Ruth, so anything out there, we, we maintain, we drag the fields and, and we line them. They provide the chalk, and anything that happens with that concession building, the bathrooms out there, it's, it's part of the contract, it's their responsibility. So, all of the infrastructure, they are taking care of.
We don't charge them, basically, I guess what my question is.
No, sir, we don't charge them. But they do bring economic impact into the city when they bring, you know, the, they, they play the majority of their games here in High Springs. And we're also giving back to the, they are giving back to the community by being able to have that program. I don't have the staff where I could run baseball on my own.
Not that I'm picking on Santa Fe Babe Ruth, I was just curious about, are they paying these fees? Because I, I wasn't aware of that, if they were.
Right, so we need a roof on the concession, and that should be on them. So it's, it's, that's the type of contract that we have with Babe Ruth. So it's a little bit different than these leases that we have in the buildings. It's, it's a different type of, of contract, and we can provide that for you guys if you would like a little.
Well, that's the only one that would be using Memorial Field anyway.
Yes, sir.
Or the other, do they use the other fields out here?
Occasionally, and the other fields are also, we have a partnership with the First Christian Academy as well. You know, they pay in the concession, stand out there, they're putting in irrigation. So, so partnerships allow recreation to be able to offer.
Well, they work.
Yeah.
Correct.
Especially at this time.
Yes.
Yeah, partnerships make us stronger, so.
I got no problem with that, I was just curious if there was payment for the use of, for the Santa Fe Babe Ruth seasons.
They're not on a rent basis.
Yeah, I got no problem.
And then why on this list isn't the blue room?
I had that same question, Blue Springs room is not on here.
You what now?
The Blue Springs room.
Why isn't the blue room on here with everybody else?
Got the Santa Fe room, the Poe Springs room, but not the Blue Springs room. It's on the annual lease, but it's not on the revenue and expenses one. It's here.
Yeah, because now I don't think we've ever actually rented that room.
Why not?
I think it's always been occupied by. The same museum.
It's occupied by a museum?
And then we had them write a, give us a lease as well, ten dollars.
But it's not the same museum as this one.
Why wouldn't we combine those museums into one museum room? And that would give us additional potential revenue in that room. I've only seen that room once, I didn't even know it existed until not too long ago.
It's two separate entities.
But are they both museums?
One looks like a, like a chapel kind of set up, and the other room has.
Well, I mean, it's a room, there's, there's, I don't know how much potential revenue we would get, it's fairly small. But that may be usable for an office. The Poe Springs room is zero revenue, how can we have that room and have no revenue? We can't do that.
The robotics are in there, like.
Are they still in there?
Yes, they are, okay, so, hopefully, this will make sense. So, programs, recreation department, right? We do not have the staff where we can run a program like robotics. I don't know if you all know, one of the teams from robotics is the only team in the country that got a bid to Dubai. Those kids don't pay anything at all, it's a STEM program. So, what I can't do or run programs, what we can offer is space. So, I mean, if robotics is not something that you want in High Springs, they're not, they're not a program where you can just like go to practice and like take your equipment and leave. They have thousands and thousands of dollars of equipment in there, robotics, Legos, things like that. So honestly, to keep that program in High Springs, we needed to give them space. So, you know, if you wanna lose something like that, that's the kind of stuff that, that we're talking about.
It's not that, I think we wanna lose that, but if it's a, if it's a Parks and Rec program, don't they pay fees to participate? Just like soccer would, or?
It's absolutely free.
Okay, but so it's free because the city is allowing it to be free?
We're giving them the space, now.
I mean, how they choose their business model, so it's not really a Parks and Rec program then?
We endorse them because we allow them to use the space, but the program's not free. If, if Jason was here speaking about it, I mean, they're twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, they go to regional meets, they, they held their own, you know, event at Legacy, if we had a gym here, we could do the same. Anyhow, it, it brings, I, 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 I'm not gonna be versed, I wish I had something that I could write down to explain you the benefits of what that program brings to us.
Oh, you don't need to sell me on that.
So, if, you know.
No, I get that.
If you wanted to, we would need to let them know ahead of time that this is a line item that you need to budget, right?
I'm just trying to figure out how to make this zero not be a zero. We can't afford for that zero to stay a zero, the city just can't.
And robotics, you around?
No, sir, but it is pretty darn close.
I'm just asking.
It's like the three months out of the summer that is the only downtime for them.
Yeah, I'm just asking, but robotics is an awesome program, I, I wanna put that out there. It, it definitely is, I got a chance to talk to him when I was doing the Baptist School event, robotics is.
Well, and they also put in sweat equity, like I was mentioning with the partnerships that we have with Babe Ruth, right? They are taking on those costs, they are fixing those things, right? If something broke in, in the Santa Fe room, I have no doubt that robotics would try to, try, take that on. They painted, they painted for it, it looks better than the, the, I'm sorry, Poe Springs room. It looks better than the Santa Fe room because they took that on, they had volunteers and, and, and they took care of that. I have no doubt that they couldn't get sponsorships to replace the carpet in that room if we ask them, just so that they would be able to provide that program and have that space, so.
Now, question for you, because of the grant that we got before, it needed to be like a kids program or something in there. With robotics being in there, could we look for grants like that because robotics?
Oh, absolutely. There's other projects slated, like, I wish I could do everything all at once, but, you know, I can't. So, yes, there are grants to get that fixed back up, and with lack of a community center or a gym, you know, I know that the off, the, you know, city needs office space and I'm probably talking, talking out of turn, I hope Mr. Marshall doesn't get mad at me. But, that is the closest thing that we have to a recreation center, the closest thing that we have to a community center. You know, and it's about three grand to do the carpet in just one room. So, you know, anyway, I just want you all to take that into consideration. Sometimes, I know revenue's important, especially to meet the bottom line, but we also provide a service. We also wanna make the lives better for our citizens and our community, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we all are right on board with you, it's just, we are looking at these numbers and it's our duty to be fiscally responsible with the way we dole out city resources and, yeah, we can't have an open faucet, we just don't have the money. We did for a while.
I totally agree.
You know, we did for a while and it looked good, we were, we were great, ten dollars a year, that's awesome. I'm glad we were able to do that for so long, but now we're just not, you know, we're just not in that position anymore. And we gotta tighten the belt and, and, you know, go one more notch tighter and we're gonna have to up these rates.
With the Civic Center and the community, the Douglas Center, when people do call to rent them, and I get phone calls all the time, like the Civic Center is always rented out on the weekends, they're really surprised about how cheap we are. We are less than the Lions Club, we're less than the Women's Club in Elatua, we, our rates are low. So those two buildings, if you don't act on anything else, those need to get back to, that, those need to, to be.
They, they're actually, it looks like those are the two that are extremely capable to get to where it's a, it's a negative.
Where not a lot of work needs to go in because we put in that investment, right?
Right.
If we put a little bit in, of investment into, and like you said, we could, you know, seek, seek funding for that for the community school, we can start bringing in more money there to, to satisfy those programs, like being able to support robotics, if that makes sense.
Ashley, what number gets us to zero? Do you have a number that gets us to zero across the board?
No.
I don't, no, sir.
Not that we could, we could come up with that, sorry. We could come up with that number, but it'd be a nauseating raise. We can't, we can't do, we can't do it that fast.
I get that.
Gotta go slow.
Are there any programs in the Civic Center that's going on, like, I know there's like a dance class, do they pay to use the Civic Center?
No.
Again, they offer it free to their, they, it's free.
Could we move that to the Santa Fe room?
The only reason I'm asking is because even where, what I'm trying to get at with this raising price, if we, if we have all these people using the facilities, even with the price raised, they're in the facility.
Right.
You can't rent it.
Could we move the free, the free dance program to the Santa Fe room?
Not many people rent on a Thursday night, and even if they, we did have somebody request for a Thursday night, the dance club would be more than welcome to not dance that night. So again, it, it's, it's a.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm just showing that it, I don't, I'm just sitting back and watching, but I don't see how it's gonna work. Because we got so many people using the buildings at times where that's not going to really do much. So it's just like, it's almost like saying, oh, I, I got an extra penny, I'm just gonna hold on, because that's really all that you're getting here. But, I'm gonna sit back and watch it.
Ashley, can I ask a question? In terms of the annual expenses for this year, is that fairly consistent with what previous years were, were? Or are we just looking at twenty twenty-four?
We're just looking at twenty twenty-four, she did make a column for annual expenses for fiscal year twenty-three. No, she made a column for revenue, I apologize. So, the revenue for the Civic Center last, or fiscal year twenty-three was about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Oh, so it was last, okay.
So we went about from seventy-five hundred to about ninety-eight hundred.
I, I agree with, with Vice Mayor Miller, however, in terms of, it seems like the Civic Center is our most rentable building, but if it's being given to, to free programs, we, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot. Could we not move those free programs where we're not charging them to the Santa Fe room?
Any free program that uses our facility, whether, no matter what it is, if somebody comes, a paying customer comes to rent, they don't get to use it that night. So the dance, so we know ahead of time, you know, we have to get ahold of the dance club and let them know next week, somebody's renting it, you can't use it, because the revenue comes first.
Ain't no dancing that day.
Right.
But, with it being used on Thursday, any night, just using the dance club, we're paying the electrical bill for that.
We are.
But is it an open, is it, is it an open thing to anybody in the city to come in there and use at that night?
We, we need a certificate, we, they have to have liability insurance.
No, I'm saying like, is, when they open up the dance club, is that open to every member?
Oh, yeah.
See, if that's a different scenario than if you have a private party there, or if you give it, so if it's open to the entire community to be able to utilize, I think that's completely different.
Well, that's another thing.
We shouldn't charge our own citizens to use their buildings.
That, yeah, what you just said.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a few, a few people, elder care goes in there in the mornings and plays bingo, they do hot meals and things like that for the elders. So, they definitely know, hey, just give us a call and let us know if somebody's gonna come in, we'll happily not go in that day.
Right.
So they, they definitely work with us when it comes to, you know, somebody wanting to rent it out while they're there.
In fact, we have a wedding there this weekend, and it's rented Friday and Saturday. And elder care will not be on there on Friday, all I had to do was ask, and they're like, yep, we just won't come that day. So, I mean, those, the ones that are free, they understand what they're receiving.
Right, right.
Like Zumba, when they first approached us, I don't know, a few months ago about it, that was the one directive I had is, if, yeah, because I, I, I agree. It's a service, it's free, it's open to the community, we should support that. But if somebody wants to rent that building, they can't be there, and everybody that we've talked to that uses those facilities is good with that.
Yeah, and I think the, the Douglas Center's interesting because it probably didn't have any people wanting to rent it before because it wasn't in that great a shape. Now it's a gorgeous, they did such a good job, that building is, that's our, that's our like.
It's getting rented.
Our diamond right now, so I think it's gonna be a, a good thing.
You couldn't rent the Douglas Center before, it just had a grand opener, you couldn't rent it before.
Right.
I know, but it didn't look like it does now, we just sunk how many thousands of dollars?
You couldn't rent it at all.
Thirty? Three hundred thousand dollars in it? I voted for that.
Well, I.
I was happy to do it.
I agree with, with Vice Mayor Miller, that we really don't have data on the Douglas Community Center to make any changes in the rates. I think we do need to have a solid year to understand really what we can get there. The Civic Center, I think, seems to be the low hanging fruit, that's what we rent a lot, that's the, that's my target. You know, and in terms of the Santa Fe room and the Poe room, if we can't, the Santa Fe room is, is, is a mess, agreed. I'd like to know what contractually the art program agreed to. We don't know, I never saw a contract. Like I said, I tried like heck to get them to go to the community school where there were different floors, but they wouldn't do it. So, if we can get them to come in and, and do what they had agreed to contractually, then where does that get us? It doesn't look like we're renting that room out as much anyway. So, the Civic Center seems to be my, my focus here in terms of bumping up rates.
Well, I'll tell you personally, I'm open to raising the rates on both Civic Center and Douglas Center because, just like we just said, three hundred thousand dollars invested in that building, it is an awesome looking facility. You've done the study, you've called other facilities, other municipalities. I say raise them two right there off the bat and then we look at these other ones.
I agree.
If we need to vote on it, I'll make a motion to vote on raising the rates of them two facilities. If that's the way, we need to do it.
I could second that, if we're gonna vote on it. I mean, the Douglas Center is already less than the Civic Center, we intentionally said it less, and it seems like we're filling it, we're renting it, so.
And we can always come back later and make adjustments.
Mayor, it'll have to come back, we do, we do it by resolution, so they just needed to know if you wanted to move forward with that, and then we'll bring you back a resolution.
I think we wanna move forward with that.
Just, just so I clear, is the Civic Center and the Douglas Center is what you want in resolution?
I'd be fine with moving all the rates up, they haven't been changed in seven years. We heard about inflation or the way things are going, this, everything costs more.
Mr. Marshall, what do you, go into this screen right here, what do you propose? Do you have any kind of numbers that you would wanna propose on that?
I don't.
Because the Garden Club and the Boy Scouts is done.
Done.
That building with, since now, insurance obviously is not gonna repair it.
They're not gonna do nothing.
And, so, okay, so let's take this Boy Scouts and the Garden Club, they're, they're not, they're not even safe to be in, in fact, you can't be in them, we tagged them. The, the old school, that, we can come, I, I don't have a suggestion for that, but the ones that concern me in the Chamber of Commerce, look at the service they provide, like, do, am I recommending that we rec, we change that? That's up to you guys, but you gotta, they were just up here, she's still here, she's still here, so. You know, look at the economic driver, look at the business impact and all that of what the Chamber does. They only have eight thousand dollars in their account, but how much money does the Chamber bring into this area? So do I, can we afford ten dollars a month or ten dollars a year on the Chamber building? No, we can't afford that, but should we afford that, that's a decision for you. The one that really is right now is the most concerning up there right now is Saint Madeline Community Outreach, that building is in bad shape.
Is that, is that asbestos? Is that, is that asbestos siding on that building?
I don't think so. It is.
He's nodding his head. Can you, you know what that's going to cost?
That's unreal.
That is unsustainable for us to be able to pay because that, that's bad news.
To get that building in any kind of shape, it's going to be very expensive. I don't know what to do about that building.
Has Diane put together numbers that she recommends?
No, because we didn't know, we, we wanted first direction. Do we, what do we want to look at, at raising? Because I'm, it's not up to me. It's up to you on what you raise. And if you're asking my opinion, is anybody asking my opinion?
I thought I was kind of getting it.
I don't think we should raise the Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
I don't think we should.
Can we sell that Saint Madeline?
We can. And I can, you give me the okay, I'll.
That's a really prime parcel, just letting you know if you guys ever want to improve the CRA district. Not that the building's necessarily. That's just my personal opinion, has nothing to do with the city. Just my personal opinion. That particular parcel is in a really nice location. Just wanted to say that. Again, my personal opinion only. But can you all, guys also consider acting on the sports fields? Um, because we can make revenue there. Um, so if y'all would also consider that.
Yes, yes.
I think all that, I, I'm a fan of raising everything right now. And I hate, and I say that just because if we're breaking, if we're, we're breaking even, we're offering that service still, but we gotta break even. We just cannot afford to continue to lose the money.
What's the point in raising the rate for the Poe Springs Room though? We can't rent it. No point. Right? It's not rentable, is that correct?
I think we should look at other options, maybe sponsorships for the robotics, but that's another one that, I think we got to keep robotics. I mean.
I agree with that. I like robotics.
If that's, if our expenses on that building's just less than fourteen hundred dollars, we could get some sponsorships for that program, just to cover the expenses. I don't think we're going to make money off of it, but.
Well, I don't think we need to make money. So long as we're covering our nut, we're good.
I almost think, I almost think we need to take, I think we can raise the rates of the buildings that, or the, the Civic and Douglas and the, the fields. And then I think with the other, with the programs, we need to have a workshop with all those programs, all of us in a room together. Let's sit down, let's talk about it. We'll tell them where we're at. We'll see what they can do. And we can come to an agreement together as a community to figure out where we need to be at. Because I think that any reasonable person will understand, we are losing our behinds on all of these. And we need to get somewhere with a little bit more of a clear head as to what we can actually do as a city.
And I would really like proposed rates from Diane with this because it's like, even if we raised it, if we said twenty dollars a year, and then it didn't change anything, we still in the hole. So I would like her to do some work and get us some proposed rates. So we'll know what actually, we, what we're looking at.
Which ones you are proposing to raise up there? So we can work on those numbers. Which, which buildings?
You guys think about that for a second. Ms. Jennifer, on these fields, are, do we charge like soccer? Are we going to charge flag football?
Those are city sponsored. That's something different. So I'm, if, if I go to the Games for Sports Commission and there's a soccer tournament that they're bidding for, we got Jacksonville, Orlando, that's a pay-to-play situation. And we can seek those.
Okay. We need to be more proactive in that.
Yeah, yes.
So, I, so help, help this along. We're gonna, we're gonna give you a resolution to raise those, those, um.
The first four and the fields.
Everybody want the fields to?
Yes, yes, yes.
And then on this, which ones do you want us to work numbers on? I'm gonna get, I'm gonna contact a Realtor to see what Saint Madeline's building is worth. It's, and let you know, I'm just saying, just to let you know. So you have the option, you know, if it's worth thirty grand, is it worth selling? But if it's worth a hundred grand, I don't know. I don't, I'm not Realtor. But, you know, I, I need to know which ones I need because these are a lot of important services and organizations. Which ones do you want us to research?
I'm going to vote to not raise Boy Scouts in the Garden Club.
Well.
That was a little joke, guys. Just a little humor for tonight.
Like I said, I just want numbers of knowing, like, we don't know how much we're losing. Like, there's nothing on this graph. So like, I want to know all of that before I even say anything.
You mean like operational costs, utilities, insurance, all that kind of stuff?
Like, we missing a whole column.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. It's a, yeah, that's, I think that kind of data is important before we move that conversation forward at all.
Let's hold off on these seven. Let's move with the first four, right, four?
The first, the, for the.
Four and then the fields.
The room rentals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the fields.
Yeah.
Public comment.
This is just a suggestion and I don't know if it, it would be the correct agency, but for the Saint Madeline Community Outreach, um, they do provide an unbelievable service to our community.
They do.
And I'm wondering if there is a possibly a grant that could be researched, like maybe the USDA? They're the ones that gave us the money to build the pavilion, the farmer's market pavilion. Um, so there may, and I don't, and I don't know if that would be the right agency, but I'm just suggesting that we should do some research to see if there is some agency that we can get money for because of what the kind of service that they provide to our community.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
Just one little comment.
Come on up. Come on down.
Just would like to make one little comment in regard to what she said about these grants. Normally, in other set of circumstances, that's how you would go. You would look at, uh, what's happening in the robot, in the robotics area or any other, and you would find benefits and you would write a grant for these governmental institutions. However, in the current, in the present political reality, all the, or most of these grants are just being frozen. So I think that we can spin our wheels and try to write these grants, but most likely we will not get any money to support them. So we probably have to look at something else, local methods, ways, because we will not get NSF or any other institution give us unless all the funding can be unfrozen somehow.
So I was going to mention that, I think writing a grant, and I've looked for grants, I've looked for grants for the Boy Scout Hall, I've looked for grants everywhere, but right now, grants are froze. Like she said, they're, they're on a freeze. Also, if I did find a grant, we have no match. Where are we going to get the matching funds to be competitive in the grant process? And that goes back to what I've been saying just about every month is we need to establish a five-year capital improvement plan for expenditures like this. And with that, it builds the amount so we have a match for if I could find a grant. But right now.